But very slow. David Redden has it, do you know him?
We're live.
Up on Deer Hill.
I did not know that.
Executive, uh...oh, are we live?
We are live?
Yeah, it's not quite.
Bill and I were just talking about our own personal family matters, but...
I just wondered in case we had any issues like last time.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, we'll give him a minute.
Um, yeah, it's, it's much more rare in women and usually it's men in their 50s. That's kind of the, that's kind of the, yes, that's kind of the window, the aperture when, uh...
Oh, that's right, that's right.
And my brother-in-law has got the worst kind, which is the one that also affects your frontal lobe. So another, like my father, wickedly intelligent guy who's now struggling just to form sentences.
She's in, she's down.
Yeah, it's...
It is. Pictures, looks like the time is, is, uh...
Yes, 100% agree with you. All right, if we can stand in and face the flag for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before I open the meeting, just keep everybody, keep in mind, the mics are live. We are live streaming this, so, um, just be aware that you will be picked up in the background. Um, trustee Gaylord is not going to be here tonight. He and his family are out of town, but we do have a quorum, so we are good to go. All right, I'd like to make a motion to open the meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, first thing will be public comment. Anybody from the public wish to speak? There will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting as always. Seeing no one interested in speaking, we will move on to the minutes. I'd like to make a motion to accept the May 16th, 2022 business meeting minutes as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'd also like to make a motion to accept the May 26th, 2022 special joint meeting minutes as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And next, I'd like to make a motion to accept the June 13th, 2022 special meeting minutes as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, I'd like to make a motion to table the acceptance of the June 16th, 2022 special meeting minutes until the July business meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to the treasures report. For the month of May, the open utility bounces report reads as follows. Village water sewer garbage and penalties, $155,303.89. Town water and penalties, $202,139,086. I'd like to make a motion to approve the June 2022 warrant number six and authorize payment including prepayments totaling $618,660.48. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Revenue expenditures reports by fund. The general fund revenue, $3,075,897.05 with expenditures of $1,3,594.84. Water fund revenue, $666,958.39 with expenditures of $552,223.25. Sewer fund revenue, $100,369.71 with expenditures of $15,812.12. Total receipts for the month, $3,843,225.15 which is 48.9% in anticipated revenues and $1,571,630.21 or 20% in anticipated expenditures through the end of May. The sewer capital fund balance is $460,759.39 including interest through May 31st and the amount collected in villages, in village taxes and penalties, $2,784,160.22 through May 31st. Moving forward to the board department reports. Dave, you normally do building department, correct, or is that Bill?
That's me.
Okay, building department trustee Cornright.
Uh, Village of Cornwall and Hudson Building Department report for May 2022. Building department permits issued 18. Certificate of Compliance Occupancy issued 14. On-site site inspections, 27 total. Um, 19 on the nine to five shift, eight on the five to 10 shift. Complaint inspections, four. Violations, one. Stop work orders, three. Municipal searches, five. Solar panels, zero. And fire inspections, 13. Manny Carmona, code enforcement officer.
And I saw Manny today working, so I'm unsure...is that him? I'm unsure where he is because he told me he was going to be here. Um, so the way I read this is it looks like we're at what, a two to one ratio of during the day, um, during the day inspections versus the 5:00 to 10:00 PM on Tuesdays and Thursdays? Does that sound right? Did I do the math right?
Yep.
And it is something which I, I do want the board to consider. I know we've spoken about this in work sessions about us bringing on another, um, code enforcement officer, younger, more junior, obviously with less accreditations and at a cheaper rate, um, to move us into the realm of 30 hours per week. I think in going through the files with Manny, I think the argument could be made, and I spoke with the deputy mayor about this, as far as why we don't have a full-time code enforcement officer. I think the argument could be made now that there is work aplenty in the village for us to pay someone 40 hours a week. So if we keep a part, if we keep them part-time, I know it's better on the, on the pension stuff, but I'd like the board to consider at least us bringing somebody on for an additional 10 hours. I know we've talked about it in the work session, and I'd like to put something together by September. Give me a chance to kind of put some proposals together for you guys to look at, keeping in mind that July and August, we have a compressed schedule and only one meeting. But maybe put this on the calendar for September for us to thoroughly debate, vet, and then potentially put some feelers out for some applications.
I totally agree.
Anybody opposed to that, Dave?
No.
Bill?
Nope.
Okay. All right, moving on. Uh, next department report, deputy mayor Kane, the fire department.
Okay, for May 2022, uh, with respect to automatic alarms, there were one, seven medical events, one good intent, five drills, two New York State training classes, two meetings, one work detail. Uh, they participated in the Memorial Day Parade and three public relations details for a total of 23 events and a total of 480 volunteer hours. The chief notes that firefighter Jack Dolan successfully completed New York State firefighter one training. Engine 411 remains out of service for repairs. Fire department participated in the annual river sweep cleanup effort. Fire department participated in the Cornwall Middle School Career Day for recruitment of future volunteers. They also participated in the Cornwall Yacht Club season opening flag raising ceremony. And the assistant chief's vehicle is awaiting installation of warning equipment. Michael P. Trainer, chief. Thanks, Mike.
Chief, anything to add?
I'll just, no correction on that. It's not Jack Dolan, it's Jackie autocorrect on the computer.
Oh, right.
And since the, um, preparation of this report, another firefighter, um, John Ortiz has successfully passed firefighter one. And we have two firefighters, Captain Trainer and firefighter Charlie Quinn Jr. that successfully completed the national exam for firefighter two.
I got a question for you. Firefighter one, is it all in house or do you have to go for additional training?
They all go out to the Orange County Fire Training Center.
How many hours is that?
It's 129 hours.
All right, anything else, Michael?
No, thank you.
Assistant chief Quinn, anything to add?
Nothing.
All right, I do want to, and I should have done this at the beginning, I do want to thank the people, including the village clerk who hates it when I put her on blast, as well as the department heads, because you guys were all off today and you're here today because we are having a village board meeting. So thank you for your time. The village employees all got an unexpected day off because we aligned ourselves with the federal holiday for Juneteenth. Um, and our attorney has structured it such that this will be something that will be subject to negotiation with the unions when we circle back here very shortly with CSEA and PBA. Correct, Joe?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next, police department trustee Brain.
Uh, here's the monthly police report from May 1st through May 31st, 2022. There were 380 total calls for service. Fortunately, there were no felony crime calls. Uh, as for misdemeanors and violations, there were two fraud, two pedi, uh, three pedic larceny, three harassment or aggravated harassment. Uh, under arrest, there was one arrest for violation. Under vehicle and traffic, there were no personal injury accidents. There were five property damage accidents. 19 traffic summonses were issued.
Yes.
10 traffic warnings were issued. Nine parking summonses were issued. Eight traffic enforcement posts were posted and two speed or radar sign postings were made. Under non-criminal activity, there was one fire response call, three domestic incidents, six alarm response calls, three noise complaints, one suspicious person call, two suspicious vehicle calls, two suspicious activity calls, one animal complaint, one disorderly adult call. And on department assists, uh, they assisted the town of Cornwall PD eight times, EMS seven times, other agencies twice. They performed four welfare checks and assisted four citizens. Uh, during the month of May 2022, the COHPD officers participated in the Orange County Stop DWI Traffic Enforcement Grant Funding. And during the month of May, the COHPD assisted with both traffic and security for the annual Memorial Day parade. For which we thank them. Thank you, chief. Chief, uh, respectfully, chief Stephen E. Dixon. Thank you, chief.
Chief, anything to add? I know we have a couple of resolutions coming up, um, but anything, anything else to add?
Um, just, uh, we, uh, this is a, you know, May and June are busy months. Uh, we, we did traffic and security for both the Cornwall Central High School junior and senior proms. And we also obviously had River Fest beginning of this month. And yesterday, I'm sorry, Saturday, we had the Lopez family celebration of life. Uh, detailed out of the River Friday.
Yeah. So I know we've had a, uh, a ton of traffic to the waterfront. One thing I'm going to ask you to do, um, I had a resident come seek me out today and he or she had found this flyer down by the gazebo, down by the shelter down there. It's absolute repugnant vile propaganda conspiracy theory stuff and it's, it's loaded with antisemitism, uh, with remarks and just it's, it's lunacy. But I read it, there are no threats in here that I could determine or discern, but I'd like you to take a look at it. And if possible, maybe reach out to the FBI officer, maybe have Sergeant Pena reach out to them. Without a threat on here, there's nothing we can do and free speech protects the speech. Not that we like and agree with, but the, the, the speech we find repugnant and vile. But just see if there's anything to this, you know? There's no group named in this, but it's, it's total antisemitism. So if you could take a look at this for me, have them reach out just so that they know. And they may say, yep, we're aware of this group or whatever. And because there's such a, I went back down to the river today just to look around that area. There's so many people using it, it could be anybody. And obviously you can't arrest them for this.
Where was it found?
Down by the gazebo, by the, uh, the shelter.
Okay.
Yep, down there. And, and this person walks their dog down there every day and she just brought it up to me and she said, hey, I don't know if there's anything you can do about this. And I looked at it and said, there's no threat here, there's nothing the police department can do, but I'll just have them reach out, see if maybe the feds have anything in their, you know, in their anti-bias or their hate crimes unit or whatever. And they may say, yeah, this was a group that such and such. Or somebody may just have dropped it down for whatever reason, but, okay? All right, thank you for that and thank you for me putting you, uh, you know, under the gun um, to ensure that we have coverage for summer playground for six weeks for those five hours that, uh, down there. I know you are scrambling trying to get your work schedule fixed and, and with people on vacations, but I do appreciate it. I think it's important and I've had a number of parents come up to me and say, after finding out that we're doing this, that they're very appreciative that the police department is going to be there. Okay, moving on to the department of public works and that is going to go back to trustee Cornright.
Village of Cornwall Hudson Department of Public Works, May 2022. Trash collected for the month, 118.65 tons. Recycling collected for the month, 32 tons. Yard waste collected for the month, 75 yards. Maintenance of village-owned vehicles and equipment continues. Mowing and trimming of village-owned properties. Sweeping of the streets, the blacktop patching. New roof installed on the bandstand, very nice job there. Repaired the flower beds in the village square and I see they took care of the curbing too. Uh, the parking lot spaces and crosswalks were painted. Um, the cleaning of the storm drains. Assisted the police department with traffic control devices for Memorial Day parade. Notes, sidewalk replacement has begun on Idlewild Avenue, Second Street and Hudson Street. Dave Hallerson, Superintendent Public Works. That looks great.
Dave, anything to add? I know we have a, a resolution for you as well, but anything other than the resolution, anything to add?
Nah, things are going good.
All right.
Dave, just a quick question. I know you told me, when are they, when are they going to start paving, 218?
Fall.
Tentatively in the fall.
Are they going to do some, are they going to do the, are they going to replace curbing too?
Probably not. Usually, usually what they'll do is just mill and pave.
Yeah, it's going to be a skim.
Essentially what we did out here, correct?
Yeah.
Just did out here.
Because I know down there, there's like 10, I don't know, it's like 15 feet of, uh, right in front of them, not in front of, but before you get to the music shop, the sidewalk between Tony Menudo's place and the music shop. That, there's no curb there. It's like, it's like 20 feet long. So I'm figuring like, would they, I mean, is that, are we responsible for that?
No, that's, that's state highway. That's theirs.
So can you ask them to, it's been like that for a long time?
We can ask.
Why, they're just, they're non-responsible when it comes to curbing?
It depends on what they're working, working on.
Yeah.
I'm just figuring since we're getting it, since we're getting that done, if they can at least fix that. I don't know, I know, I'm sure there's other places, but, but that just stands, that just stands out. I mean, if they're repaving, geez, put in 10 feet or 15 feet of curbing.
I, and, and I second that in that, um, they did a great job. I'm assuming it was them, right? The state that did the, the, the pavements, the sidewalks, not pavement, the sidewalks in front of Lee Murphy's house?
No, we did that.
We did those.
Yeah.
Those guys are good.
So, so next to that in front of Cumberland. We own those pa, those sidewalks there, those, our responsibility is at Cumberland because those sidewalks are in awful shape and they get probably more foot traffic and more vehicular traffic than any other place down the lower village.
Yeah, they're not cracked and broken up, but they are weathered and...
That's a kind word for, that is a kind word.
It's, it's also, I mean, they had talked about closing that store down and remodeling it. A couple of years ago, they went before the planning board and had every, I believe it was in front of the planning board, but, uh, they submitted plans to the building department at one time for renovations. We were going to do the sidewalks when they renovated, when they closed.
Yeah.
It's very hard to tear their access to the fuel pumps out and make it one way in, one way out.
But the fuel pumps are in, in the back.
But yeah, and no, I'm saying, think, think about driving into that store with only being able to go into one side.
You mean while this is going on?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so in having talked to a number of general managers there over the years, but in particular the last couple of years, especially because when we had that incident with the car that was, that somebody took for a joyride and the chief had, uh, our police department pull the videotape there and I talked to the general manager down there, they're not looking, because of the size of the store, they're not getting any of the upgrades of all the other Cumberland farms around the region are getting. So I think we can safely assume they're not going to be, they're not planning on doing anything there. Yeah, that's the thing. And everything else has been, you know, updated two, three, four, five years ago, but they're not doing this one just because of the size of it. It's just too small. All right, but you're...
They had plans for renovations, but not to increase the size.
Got you.
Just to redo the inside of the building and upgrade it.
If you, if you get it, look, just reach out to them. I mean, if there's other places where the curbing is horrible, I don't, I'm sure there's other places. I don't think there's lots, but if you can get, if you can get some, if you can ask them to do some of it, we can get it done, that would be great. Otherwise it's going to...
I'll reach out. Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, and thank you for your efforts on Second Street. Um, I'd like to, you know, if we could plan on doing those, I think there's three streets. Idlewild, what is it, Willes right here and Second that have those one and a half foot or two feet wide sidewalks. Do we have them anywhere else in the village?
Um...
I don't know, I'll stop your head.
No, I mean Idlewild Avenue, we're going to remove the ones on the one side now that we got the other side done.
Yep.
Uh, the bottom of Second Street, probably the worst. First Street needs walks too, but that, that, we need more, that's a big project.
Got you.
That's for later time.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any other questions for Dave before we move on? Water department trustee Brain.
Village of Cornwall and Hudson Water Department, May 20, 2022 monthly report. Monthly production was 20,974,000 gallons with the daily average of 676,581 gallons. Uh, the department collected 36 samples in accordance with our approved water quality monitoring plan and collected eight samples in response to boil water advisories issued following water leak repairs. As for treatment, the Blackrock filtration plant was placed online 24/7. Water was supplied to the distribution system was a 50/50 blend of Blackrock reservoir water and well water. Uh, as for transmission and distribution, 70 utility markouts were completed. Water main leak were, was repaired at Elm Street and at the town pool. Uh, a new water main isolation valve was installed on Payson Road. Uh, the department relocated a water service connection at 100 Weeks Avenue. They repaired water main shut, or yeah, repaired water main shut-off valves at Grand Street at Willow Avenue, Ridge Road, 325 Hudson Street, Maple Avenue at Hudson Street, Spruce Street at River Avenue, First Street at Hudson Street, Wood Avenue at Hudson Street and 26 Stillman Avenue. They did, uh, repaired curb valve box and shut-off valves at 28 and 32 Mailer, at 320 and 322 Hudson Street, at 5 and 8 Sands Ring Drive, 37 Algernon Street, 164 Main Street and 58 Highland Avenue. Uh, leaks were repaired by property owners on Angola Road and the Cedar Lane private water line that's out there. Water shut-off at property owner's request was done at 16 Lafayette Street, 8 Sands Ring Drive, 18 Beeks Road and 32 Mailer Avenue. Uh, the department read commercial water meters. They read the town residential meters. Eight final water meter readings were completed. 12 residential water meters were replaced. 10 miscellaneous customer appointments were completed and four water line inspections were completed. Sincerely, Michael P. Trainer, Senior Water Superintendent.
Michael, anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, and I know we've got, uh...
The, the town pool, um, I, I think you had mentioned in the work session that our, the water department's work there is done for now, I think?
Correct.
Okay.
So most of this repair work was completed with the use of Hydravac?
Correct.
That we rented?
Correct.
Okay.
So the kids will be splashing around for summer playground and town rec camp.
Excellent.
Okay. Anything else on water? We've got some resolutions and I know that water is a couple of them. Um, all right, we've got, uh, moving on to resolutions. We have eight tonight. They should go fairly quickly. Um, I think everybody's aware of the Chestnut Street Water Main Replacement Project that we are working with the town. This next resolution will be for bid acceptance and the bid opening for the town of Cornwall Sidewalk Replacement Project, the base bid and the Chestnut Street Water Main Replacement Project, alternate number one, was held in town hall on June 10th. Bids were received from ELQ Industries Incorporated, Precise Enterprises, Sunup Construction Corpora, Corporation and then Nanini and Callahan Excavating. I'd like to introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas the Village of Cornwall and Hudson and the town of Cornwall have entered into an intermunicipal agreement for joint public bidding on the village's Chestnut Street Water Main Replacement Project and the town's sidewalk replacement project. And whereas the two said contracts were put out for public bid and whereas on June 14th, the town council awarded the bid for the sidewalk replacement project to Nanini and Callahan Excavating, the lowest responsible bidder. And whereas upon reviewing the bids and based upon the recommendation of the village's consulting engineers, Pintagaro and Deutsch, it has been determined that the lowest responsible bidder on the village's Chestnut Street Main Extension Project is Nanini, is Nanini and Callahan Excavating with a bid of $212,122. Now therefore be it resolved that. Number one, the village board hereby accepts the said bid of Nanini and Callahan Excavating and awards a contract on the Chestnut Street Water Main Extension Project and Nanini and Callahan Excavating. And number two, that the mayor be authorized to execute all documents necessary to enter and execute said contract. I can make that motion and...
Sure.
May you allow me to do that? All right, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
When's that project starting?
Michael?
It's scheduled to start towards the end of July.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the Mill Street Water Main Replacement Project and its bid acceptance. Um, a bid opening for the Mill Street Water Main Replacement Project was held in Village Hall on June 10th. Bids were received from Regal Utility Services Incorporated, Nanini and Callahan Excavating, Sunup Construction Corporation, Tam Enterprises Incorporated and Giann, Giannfia? Is that how you say it? Giannfia? G.I.A.N.F.I.A. Corporation. So I'd like to introduce the following resolution with this in mind and move for its adoption. Whereas Pintagaro and Deutsch Consulting Engineers, the engineers for the village of Cornwall and Hudson, prepared drawing specifications and contract documents for the Mill Street Water Main Replacement Project. And whereas on April 18th, 2022, the village board accepted the drawing specifications and contract documents and authorized the village clerk to advertise for bids. And whereas a bid opening was held on June 10th and five total bids were received. And whereas upon reviewing the bids and based upon the recommendation of the village's consulting engineers, Pintagaro and Deutsch, it has been determined that the lowest responsible bidder on the Mill Street Water Main Extension Project is Nanini and Callahan Excavating with a bid of $220,998.84. Now therefore be it resolved that, the village board hereby accepts the said bid from Nanini and Callahan Excavating and awards a contract in the Mill Street Water Main Extension Project to Nanini and Callahan Excavating and that the mayor be hereby authorized to execute all documents necessary to enter and execute said contract. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Um, what's the, the schedule for that project? I assume that Chestnut is first?
Chestnut is first because the town's under a deadline for the sidewalks.
Okay.
Mill Street will be dependent on availability of 12-inch duct line and pipe.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike is, I, just looking at the numbers, I find it amazing how Nanini and Callahan comes in 220 and Giannfia, it's 175,000 more. It's almost the same on the other bid. The spread is just unreal.
Yeah. It's not here. That's why.
That's true too, yeah.
That's why.
That's true too.
Mobilization.
All right.
All right, moving on to our next, number three out of eight resolutions to authorize the purchase of a new sewer jet cleaning machine. And I spoke with the DPW superintendent shortly before this meeting and was informed that, uh, the motion that we're going to make, we're going to have to change the numbers on it now. The board had discussed this at the work session and was amenable to a purchase price of a new sewer jet cleaning machine. It had cost not to exceed $75,000. Dave informs me that, uh, looking into it today, it's almost $10,000 more. So it would need to be bumped up to 85,000. Now Dave, you wanted to say something in regards to how you want to proceed here.
Well, yeah, I've been looking, looking at the quote. I didn't get it till four o'clock this afternoon. It's just an updated quote on what we had got. But, uh, delivery and freight alone went up 150%.
Where's it coming from?
Uh...
Warwick.
Rush, New York. But it's, it's going to come from Michigan to Rush, New York to us. But the factory is actually in Michigan.
So, so...
And there's also, if I could, just, just, just one second. I, we're reviewing the quote a little closer as we're sitting here. There is a 3% discount that was on the, uh, earlier, the first quote. It's not on this one. So I was just looking at that. That comes out to about 20, almost, almost $2,500 there. And the quote comes in at 84, 450.[1765.41] And the quote comes in at eighty-four, four fifty, so, I mean, we're probably looking somewhere in the area of eighty, eighty-two thousand.
You're satisfied with the fact that they applied all of the price breaks that we, we be eligible for?
I wanna, I'm, I'm gonna get on the horn tomorrow with them about the, uh, three percent that I don't see in the second quote. That I see in the first quote.
Alright.
But that's about twenty-five hundred dollars, so.
For the benefit of the public, uh, our discussions about this, in case people haven't tuned in prior. It, it's a very necessary investment, uh, it's a tool that if you rent it or use it in any other way, your, uh. Uh, your costs are far beyond what it would be and we need it to keep, maintain the sewer lines in the village at a working state. And the other one we had is how old?
Twenty-five years old.
Twenty-five years old.
Uh, we, we had a, we had an issue over the weekend where we had to run the machine we have now and. I jokingly with the mayor said, we, you know, we blessed it before it went out to make sure. And they got the job done, but.
We also looked into piggybacking on that.
Yeah.
We didn't go any, yeah, we did not get a positive reason.
Are we comfortable bumping this up ten grand, cause it's not to exceed that? With the understanding that you will ensure that we get the three percent price break on it and any other price break that might be available. So it will be, it will be less than eighty-five thousand.
I'm going to work as best I can, but unfortunately, it's a piece of equipment that we need.
Yep.
It's not something that we want to go without, we don't want to have to wait for three hours for someone to come and open a sewer line up for us. When there's sewers running in Mrs. McGillicuddy's basement, as you say.
Lot of things going on at Mrs. McGillicuddy's.
She lives on whatever you.
Is it, is it fair to say that if freight costs and fuel costs drop in the intervening time between now and delivery, they will not adjust the estimate further?
I'm anticipating, uh, rapid delivery actually, so.
It's, it's going to be, it's a trailer vehicle itself.
It's a trailer mount.
Going on a truck trailer.
Yeah, they will probably be flat bedding it here.
Yep.
Okay, and what do you think the turnaround on that is? You think we'd have it in a week? Do you think it's a month?
It's probably gonna be a month or so.
Okay. Good, alright, well then.
Just one question for Gene, I know this is coming out of our capital sewer fund, do we know when our next payment is gonna be to the town?
It's always around the fall, toward the end of the year.
Okay.
And we, they have pretty much settled on the financing, so we have fairly steady and fixed costs for most of it. There is a portion of it that we're still working on funding for, like, I think it's the I and I portion. But we, they have gone from short-term to long-term debt in the first portion of their bond issues, so those are set costs now.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, upon recommendation from the DPW superintendent, Mr. Halverson. I'd like to make a motion authorizing the purchase of a new sewer jet cleaning machine. At a cost not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars from Sincon Equipment Incorporated through the Sourcewell Contract. The purchase being exempt from New York State competitive bidding. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Um, yeah, Dave, you said it was what, twenty-five years old, you thought, yeah, it was purchased in nineteen ninety-seven?
We'll get something for it, right?
What's that?
We'll get something for it. Do your best, do your best, Dave.
The town also owns part of that machine, so.
Oh.
Yeah, okay.
They, they weren't interested in, uh, renewing now since they don't do their own sewer maintenance anymore. Since they have a private contractor taking care of the sewer plant.
Yeah, they have.
Got it. Okay, moving on to the next, uh, resolution to approve an agreement between the Village of Cornwall and Hudson. And Robert M. Thompson, T.H.O.M.P.S.O.N. Um, this is something that the village board has been in discussion with, with the chief. As well as with the attorney for the village in regards to hiring an individual who is currently an NYPD officer. And because he has not been there for a full three years, the NYPD. Has the option of coming back and recouping some of the expenses of putting a police officer through the academy. So, as an indemnification, uh, what's the right term for this, for?
Really, ream- reimbursement?
The, the village is seeking, well, the village is seeking indemnification via a reimbursement contract with this potential hire. That in the event, which from my conversations with my colleagues at the New York Conference of Mayors. The people that I spoke to said, it almost never happens. And then you would say, well, then it could happen here, it almost never happens and some of the contiguous counties like Nassau County. Have hired away hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and the NYPD seldom if ever goes after them. So we just want to make sure we protect the village, if we do hire this kid. Who interviewed well and who we'd like to bring on board as a full-time police officer. We protect ourselves because if the NYPD does come after him. Or come after us for the money, that he would be responsible for the, whatever the cost of that training was. Did I say that right, Joe?
Yeah, correct, he would be respons- he would be responsible in the first instance. Or if the village does end up having to pay anything, he would be obligated to reimburse us. And in addition to that, as you said, he has the obligation to indemnify us, meaning if. Came to some kind of litigation, negotiation, then he would have to make the village whole for those costs as well.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion approving an agreement prepared by the attorney for the village, Mr. Joseph McKay. Between the Village of Cornwall and Hudson and Mr. Robert M. Thompson. And I'm gonna seek authorization for the mayor to execute said agreement on behalf of the village. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, moving on to the next resolution, the two-stall trailhead compost system installation, the gift that keeps on giving. Uh, the proposal acceptance. The two proposals to install a Clivus Multrum two-stall trailhead compost system. Were received on June tenth from Spagnoli Excavating and Sons and Nanini and Callahan Excavating. These proposals are currently under review.
So we're not ready at this point.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna do.
I thought we would be ready for tonight.
But we're not gonna be, you're right, okay, so I will table that. So you now know that there are two bids in and they're being reviewed. And we will take care of that business at the July meeting. Okay, approve the application from Lapoya Incorporated Food and Music on the Hudson Nights. Scheduled for the twenty twenty-two calendar year, subject to Lapoya providing the village with proof of health department. Certificates and proof of insurance and further subject consultation with the code enforcement officer. To make certain all safety measures are in place and being followed. We should also make, make that for the Donahue Farm movie too, right, Mike? Cause this only says the Donahue Memorial Park, but we're also, you're also gonna have them there too, right?
If they'd like to come.
Okay, so I'll just add to it, Donahue Memorial Park. As well as the Donahue Farm property for the movies and music on the Hudson Nights scheduled for the twenty twenty-two calendar year. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Manny, how are, do, do you need to, do they need to reach out to, to the code enforcement officer to make sure that they get the inspections before they go there? Is there a process for that?
I, Mr. Mayor, there was some language that I added to the resolution today. Uh, it was subject to the code enforcement officers' review, subject to health providing. Health insurance certificate for serving food and other insurance that would be required by the village.
Okay, excellent, alright.
You've already provided it.
Yeah.
So we're good.
I'm always the last to know.
You sound like my wife. Alright, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, now, uh, the Donahue Memorial Park Pavilion, acceptance of bid documents and setting the bid date. This is in regards to a potential, um, park pavilion down at the bottom of Dock Hill Road. Tucked into that little neat, um, corner there, that, that space there. Um, a place where families can congregate, which would have picnic tables and especially in inclement weather. Um, would be a place where if people had picnics planned or events planned, they could, they could, they could be sheltered. So I'd like to make a motion to approve contract documents, bid form and specifications and authorize the village clerk to advertise for bids. On the construction of a pavilion at Donahue Memorial Park with a bid opening date of July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at two P.M. Eastern. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So we have grant money for this?
Yes.
How much?
Uh, I believe it's fifty thousand.
Yeah, I think it's right around fifty thousand dollars, Dave.
Okay.
So. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And Gene, if, correct me if I'm wrong, that was a DASNY grant, correct? Was it a DASNY grant?
Yes, we had actually originally applied through the Hudson River Estuary Program and then Senator Scoofus was interested and it became the DASNY.
Yeah. Perfect, alright. Moving on to the appointment of the part-time police officer, so, um, we're gonna appoint a part-time police officer. The officer is gonna be the same person that we just agreed to execute a contract with. Who is ultimately going to fulfill the open and vacant full-time police officer position. That has been vacant since the retirement of Detective Twilliger. Um, but because the list that comes out in the county is only good for ninety days, Chief. We have to, we have to request the list again, of which this individual will be on. And then we will move to move, we will move him into a full-time position. So for now, before we have the list, we're gonna hire him on as a part-time officer so he can start filling shifts. So that's the reason why we're hiring him as a part-time officer with the full understanding. That hopefully in the July meeting, we will appoint him as a full-time police officer. I get that right? Excellent, alright, upon the recommendation of Chief Dixon, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Robert M. Thompson. A part-time police officer subject to a seventy-eight week probationary period at the current pay rate in the PBA contract. Now, Judge, I know that you and I were floating this back and forth. Did we want to go with language going forward with village employee hires? That we would just use the highest amount of probationary time that was allowed by state law? Is that how we want to handle that?
That's generally the, the language that I recommend to my boards. Of course, each situation is somewhat unique, but generally the, the language I use is if we're going to appoint a permanent employee. I recommend to my boards that it be subject to the longest probationary period permitted by the Orange County Rules for the Civil Service. So those are the local rules that, that we are bound to follow. And normally, most positions are between eight weeks and fifty-two weeks probation. Uh, for deputy sheriffs and police officers, it is actually up to seventy-eight weeks. I believe that was the correct number, seventy-six, seventy-eight.
So that puts it at what, that seventy-eight would be a year and a half?
Year and a half, year and a half. And that's particular to deputy sheriffs and police officers, uh, in the county.
Excellent, I don't disagree with that, I think that the longer period of time that you can have for officers of the law on probation, um, is appropriate.
And the, the chief shared with me this, he can speak for himself, he's here, but he shared with me this afternoon. That you were open approving of the seventy-eight weeks, correct?
Correct. Okay. Any board member have any, uh, issues or pushback on using seventy-eight weeks as our probationary period? Which just allows us to be able, it allows us to terminate somebody without cause if they're probationary?
Correct.
So that's, that's a big thing. Okay, alright.
And this, with this particular individual, you know, would continue, if you're looking to make this person part-time and then potentially full-time. It would carry over, potentially to their.
Start over as soon as he?
I, I can check it at the time, but I don't think so, this is because the, the appointment becomes permanent now.
Got it, okay, alright, I forgot, did I, did I ask for a second? I did not, okay, um.
Second.
Alright, a second, so let me just, so we're, we're looking to, to hire him part-time, sev- seventy-eight week probationary period at the current pay rate in the PBA contract. Dave gave me a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, that, is that it for resolutions? So we actually had seven, seven resolutions done, okay. Um, other business, moving on, um, Bill, want to give a, give a update on the Donahue Farm Steering Committee? Um, I know that there's some new updates and.
Yeah, I haven't, um, I believe I was unable to attend the most recent meeting and I haven't had an update from them. They did do, I believe, they had scheduled a walkthrough last Thursday to review, oh no, I did, I did attend, sorry, I'm getting confused about which month it is. They had, uh, they're, they're beginning the planning process where they're actually taking, uh, and compiling suggestions from the community and from the members of the committee. Uh, and placing those sort of visually on a map, uh, you know, recommendations. They have the map is on a whiteboard so that they can, uh, you know, flexibly change what the, what the discussions are about. But they did a walkthrough to kind of visually pair the suggestions with the areas on the ground, so. They did that, but I haven't received an update from them since then. It, um, I received notice, um, that, uh, the, the acting chair had to step down from the committee. Uh, due to personal reasons and, uh, the committee has not, as far as I know, has not convened formally since that announcement to. Decide how they would like to proceed. We had suggested some possibilities, perhaps reducing the size of the committee by two people just to, um, you know, keep it as, at an odd number. But it seems as though, uh, you know, nine-person committee is, is fairly large and, um, maybe it'd be more efficient, but that's, you know, I would think we would want your input on it.
Committee lost Bill Thompson and they lost Aaron Cousins and then we added Dan Benjak, so, um, and now.
I think they're at eight now, actually, so.
So they're eight.
Wouldn't be dropping straight to seven if we did, so.
It would be dropping straight to seven. Yes, right, or no?
No, I think they're, I think they're at nine and then.
So they've lost, they've lost three, oh, and we added two, so it would be eight, cause we added Dan Poindexter too.
Uh, yeah, we replayed, we backfilled the first two vacancies.
And brought it to nine, so this brings us to eight.
To eight, yes, so.
Yeah, so I'm of the mind, I agree with Trustee, uh, Brain, we spoke about this offline. And we both are of the mind that if we can get that committee to seven, that is better because we realize that. I know we, we want to include as many people as possible, but it is too unwieldy at nine. Yeah, Bill, so I would be interested to see how they want to proceed as, as far as the way to do it, cause now if they're at eight, that provide, that presents some problems.
It might be someone who wouldn't mind stepping down.
So, uh, so their, their meeting, uh, is scheduled for next Tuesday. I will be out of town for that, but, uh, I'll look to them for minutes and, um, and, uh. We'll see where they, you know, I'll, I'll raise that to the, I'll email them and say, we discussed this, what's your thought? Please decide, you know, please come up with something at your meeting to, to give feedback to that thought. And there you go, but they are, they are pursuing plans, like they're doing what they've been asked to do. We're moving forward to, to document the suggestions, figure out potential, uh, revenue streams, potential funding mechanisms. You know, a sort of a rollout plan and how they would present something back to the board as far as recommendations go.
Okay.
Perfect.
Alright, sounds good.
Actually, I'm sorry, and then the roof, uh, our, uh, do we have, oh, we passed that, didn't we? Uh, our village engineers have put forward a, a, uh, plan to manage the contracting and the bid, um, process for roof repair.
We did that in the work session.
So we approved that contract, uh, the, we approved that scope of work with the, uh, engineers, so that's going to be underway. And, um, they're gonna keep us apprised of the bid process and try to get that roof going, uh, and finished before the winter again.
One more winter is.
No, we'll make it.
One of them's gonna be the last winter.
Okay, anything else?
No, no.
Alright, thank you for that. Um, alright, I know that the attorney for the village sent around the draft policy and guidelines on donations. I know that there was only one sticking point, which I had raised at the work session. In regards to, I just, I felt it was unnecessary having the directive or the requirement that somebody had to. Somebody had to attach a project or, or I forget the wording or the verbiage of it, but I just felt like it was, you know, overkill. Have you guys taken a look at it? Do you guys have anything to add, any considerations one way or the other, um, in regards to what you received?
Um, so I think the sticking point was the, I had, I had raised an objection to the idea of the village being empowered to accept. Undesignated cash or unrestricted cash donation or monetary donations. As opposed to real property, as opposed to designated uses, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, we had robust discussion about that over time. I looked at some other policies and I, I looked at state law as best I'm, I'm no lawyer. Uh, but I looked at state law as best I'm able to understand it and a guidance from NICOM, the, uh, New York Council of Mayors. And it's, uh, I will tell you this, it's slightly confusing. At the same time, I recognize that the attorney for the village has put together, uh, a proposed policy that is in line with state law. And therefore, one would, one would.
One for me.
Well done you. And, uh, and so, you know, with that in mind, I, for example, I noted that the, the guidance from NICOM in explicating state law says that. Uh, charitable donations may be made to a municipality that may be used then for charitable purposes. They may not be designated as to their use, they must be undesignedated, you know. They must be undesignedated, you know, unrestricted. So with that in mind, I'm sort of like, okay, well, obviously, there's a scenario in which municipalities should be accepting unrestricted monetary donations, although the general use for those donations is charitable, without definition attached to that that I was able to chase down. And then on the other side, there were, there were various state laws and regulations. I don't see anything that makes it a huge conflict for me, so I back off my sticking point, and thank you for all the consideration and the debate and the discussion. I appreciate it, and so I'm, I'm good on that now.
I think, I, I think, I think we all understood your intent on there, and of course, it, you know, at first blush, I was, I was in agreement, and then giving it further thought, but I agree with you, much of the guidance that comes out of the state sometimes can be almost contradictory, you know, makes it hard.
So Joe, your last iteration of, of the donation policy, I don't know if I took it off. I can't, do you have it, do you have it dated?
I do, so it was quite a while.
Okay, so it wasn't, it wasn't last week after last, last week's meeting?
No, no, it was after the last business meeting, because I think, wasn't it after the last business meeting? So it would have been the May business meeting that you sent it?
I have something...
What I've sent, what I've sent recently...
Yeah.
Was just the last version, could go back to April, or maybe even before that.
All right, so it...
There's been no change for at least two or more months.
All right, so, I mean, I can get online with you, we're going to end up just removing with respect to monetary donations, the statement that the village does not accept unrestricted monetary donations.
Can we get that cleaned up copy of that, and can we get a resolution for that, and we'll, we'll pass that in July?
If, or if it's the board's preference, and you just want that one change, we can adopt it now.
You guys good with that?
Yeah.
Dave?
Yeah, the word should be charitable.
Well, hold on, I'm just reading what you have, you must state, all right, so right now, the, the only, the paragraph with respect to monetary donations states monetary, a money contribution made to the village without the expectation of goods, services, or significant benefit or recognition in return, period. When a donor makes a monetary contribution, they must state the specific intended purpose for the donation. So now we're removing that.
That, that's what I'm...
As well as the next sentence, the village does not accept unrestricted monetary donations. So that means, okay, so the, the non-monetary donations is consistent with that, then?
Okay.
I think that, that was it, that was the last, that was the only thing that was remaining.
Definition, yeah, so that's...
So, so, subject, subject to that change, I'll make a motion to pass the Village of Cornwall and Hudson donation policy, the last revised one being dated April eighteenth, subject to the, striking out the two sentences I just referred to. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, another thing off the table.
Thank you, you made that easy for me, just, I would have stumbled through the resolution part of that. All right, moving on, and I'll leave this to you, the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two fee schedule, I know we're looking to, to push that to...
Joe and I have to, we met with Manny once, Joe and I have to, and Manny was good enough to, you gave us the, the side-by-side, your proposed fee schedule, next to what is the current fee schedule, Joe and I were looking at that, he was on vacation, I was gone, too. So we have to get online with you and with respect to that, as well as the next issue, the temporary storage containers, so you tell me when...
Yeah, and I think, I know we had been reviewing the forms, we were looking...
And the forms, that's correct, yeah, and your forms, yeah, yes, we need to, we need to have, talk about those, too.
Yeah, so, so you're aware, I'd like to do it next week if we can.
Next week?
Well, I mean, if you're, if you're available, I mean, I...
Yes.
Because this week I am, I have meetings...
Yeah, so am I, so...
And I'll be, I'll be starting a jury trial on July twenty-fifth, so two, three weeks before that, I'm, I'm hunkered down.
Gotcha. All right, no, I can, I can make myself available next week.
Okay. Maybe we'll just chat before we...
Yeah, we'll talk offline.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that covered those. Manny, before I move on, because we went through the building report beforehand, anything outside of, the board is considering, and I'm going to talk to you offline about this, but I want to propose to them kind of a plan on what you and I talked about, maybe bringing somebody junior on, pick up some hours, I'm going to put that together, and I want to talk to you about it, kind of, kind of work out the kinks in it before I present it to these guys, but let's me and you talk about that. Anything else that, from the report that jumped out at you, or anything else in your doings in the village that the board should be aware of?
I guess your advertisement about the rental is paying off, because now they're beginning to come in.
Good. Good, so where, I know, I know we went from two to four, are we, have, have, I know we doubled our, our, our input, or intake.
Just leave it at, it's going on.
All right. All right, all right, all right. Anything else? And I know you're working with several residents regarding those garbage cans, the industrial dumpster-sized stuff on there, are those moving along with...
They're moving along, I got three on the table right now that I'm working with, and they're, they're willing to do it, nobody has said no, or, you know, they, they got problems, they got issues, but they wouldn't go to the process, so I want to do them individually to their respective process.
Excellent.
Get them to go blind.
Helping them get the yes, good.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, next item, COVAC, NUVAC, BLS and ALS service. First of all, I want to thank New Windsor, they provided free of, free of charge to the village, I guess, CPR assistance for our summer playground, our summer playground camp counselors. So they came in, I think it was last week, and provided that to our, to our camp counselors, which is...
Is that mandatory?
Yes, yeah, they have to have that, that's, they have to, and even if they've had it before, they still have to have a refresher, so. Okay, regarding the COVAC, NUVAC consolidation, however we want to refer to it, Thursday night, there will be a, a meeting, and it is going to be at Munger Cottage. It will include both boards, both attorneys, are you available for that Thursday?
Well, I...
Can you send one of your, yes?
I can send someone.
So representative will be there.
And junior person.
Yeah, so both attorneys and both clerks to have a public information session, it's not a hearing, but a opportunity for residents that have questions, and we have not, we've not completely figured out what the parliamentary procedure is going to be, of how we want to do this, I've got to get with Gene on that, I've got to speak to the supervisor, but we want an opportunity for, we will have the, the experts, if you will, Bill Horton will be there, Michael Bigg, the chief, Bill Horton, the president of the New Windsor Ambulance Corps, to answer any questions, and we will walk through and discuss what the transition is going to look like, so...
And my understanding is this is informational only, the boards won't be taking any action at the meetings?
A hundred percent right, there will be no action taken, just an opportunity to, we'll probably do some type of presentation, and then open it up and, you know, give the, give the public an opportunity, anybody has a question to say, well, what about this? Or how can you do this? Or how's this going to work? We want to be able to answer them, so we'll, we'll do that there. So that'll be Thursday night, seven P M., Munger Cottage. Okay, moving on to, for your information, I want to remind you about the Bandstand Concert Series, every Tuesday night, starts at six-thirty P M. Eddie Hurley does an outstanding job, and if you can make it, make sure you're there. The Town has one, which I should also shill for, on Sunday nights, and I believe it starts at six-thirty, too, did Dave, am I right?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, and they have a new bandstand out there in the, in the green space in front of Town Hall, so if you haven't been to a Sunday night one, it's, it's, it's nice as well. Okay, already told you about the public information session, movie night at Donahue Memorial Park, July second, two thousand and twenty-two. Michael, is that the, the one where you're having people vote? Do you guys know, do you guys have, have the answer yet, or no?
We will have the answer, I believe, at the conclusion of the poll, which is this Saturday. I think right now, League of Their Own is in the lead.
Well, anybody that doesn't, anybody that doesn't vote for The Princess Bride is not really a true movie fan.
I put in Tremors.
Is it in second place? One of the greatest movies ever made.
There are thirty-two, I think that's what Dominic said, thirty-two entries in the poll.
Oh, Jesus.
His input.
Yes, which also reminds me that early voting is open and available. I went and voted today at the Cornwall, soon-to-be Cornwall EMS facility on Clinton Street. Obviously, it's for early voting for the primary season, so make sure you do that. And keep in mind that come November, the village will be hosting Orange County Board of Elections in this very room here to vote this year, so you will not have to go to, across the street to St. Thomas, you will actually be able to come right in here and vote in here.
Are we doing the primaries on Election Day in here?
We, in fact, I just had a message on my machine from the county, they're going to be dropping off the machine tomorrow to be ready for the primaries.
So the early voting schedule is now through next Sunday, then on the twenty-eighth, there's the Election Day for the primary, and that's your usual...
June twenty-eighth for the, I'm sorry, yep, I, I'm sorry if I confused anybody. The actual, yes, the actual Election Day on June twenty-eighth for the primary will be here, early voting is uptown, yes. And then in November as well, so we'll do the primary here, June twenty-eighth, and whatever the Election Day is in November, second Tuesday, yeah. Okay.
And there's a second primary in August as well.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yes, 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 yes. Okay, music night at Donahue Memorial Park, July ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Michael, do we know who that is?
That is Rock Slide.
Rock Slide, excellent, that's an eighties cover band, right?
No, I think they play a multitude of generational classic rock and stuff.
All right, all right. The Cornwall Central High School Cheerleader Club Car Wash at Village Hall Parking Lot is scheduled for July sixteenth, between ten A M. and three P M.
Didn't they just do that?
They had one this weekend, too.
Yeah, they just had it this past weekend.
And they're having it the third day.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And the N Y P I R G Door-to-Door Outreach.
What is the N Y P I R G Door-to-Door Outreach?
I can speak to that, having been a canvasser for N Y P I R G after college. They're an environmental and consumer advocacy group who does door-to-door canvassing for issues, education, and modest fundraising, and they, they, I don't know what they had to apply for, but they kind of give a heads-up to the municipalities where they go.
Are they subject to the peddler law?
No.
And what does N Y P I R G stand for?
New York Public Interest Research Group.
New York Public Information Research Group.
There are, there are P I Rs, public interest research groups in many states, most states, I think, have them, and then...
And I'm assuming...
It's usually college kids that are coming in, knocking on the door.
And I'm assuming they'll have some type of I D. or something that they'll...
They'll have materials that they're carrying that have the logo and...
Got it, okay. All right, that, that is going to be June twenty-seventh to August thirty-first, so that is a solid two months, in fact, a little over two months.
Yeah, and I believe they won't be here every day, of that time, it's just the...
That's the window. Okay, all right, going around the table, let's start with board comments. Trustee Brain?
I would just like to call out Police Chief Dixon for upgrading the planters out here on the side of Village Hall, they look fantastic. In attendance at the, the Robert Lopez Celebration of Life on, was that Sunday or Saturday? Saturday, Saturday. And that was phenomenal, it was obvious to see the impact that he's had on the village and just other areas of his life, the, the sort of range of people who are in attendance was, was a very broad section of, of the community, and, you know, his family was there, and I think they appreciated it, and it was very good, and Deputy Mayor probably could say more to that because he spoke at it, and so that was, that was a real mark of distinction for how people feel about him. And I had written down early voting, but I think we covered it. And that's all I've got, so thank you very much.
All right, Trustee Cornwright?
I'm good.
Deputy Mayor Kane?
I just, just one thing, as to reiterate what Bill said, with respect to Mr. Lopez, the Celebration of Life, it was well-attended, it was, it was actually, it was kind of, actually kind of cold day, but very well-attended. Your, your proclamation was a home run, many comments from their son, Andy, about it. The bottom line is that Mr. Lopez was a fabric of this community, and prior to me getting up there, I was speaking to his, his wife, Joan, she was saying, you know, Cornwall, we're lucky in Cornwall, it's, she's looking around at the landscape, saying, you know, we, we have a little slice of heaven. And what I meant to say when I got up there and that, and I failed to do it, was, is, yes, you know, there's two parts of that, one part is in Cornwall, and Cornwall and Hudson, the landscape is a slice of heaven, but it's the people that fill that landscape that make it that way, and, and Mr. Lopez was one of those gentlemen through and through. I always said he had the infectious smile, anytime you met him, either walking by or riding his bicycle, so it was an excellent tribute, so, and I, I really enjoyed attending it, so that's, that's all I have.
All right, I don't think I can say it any better than Trustee Brain and Deputy Mayor Kane did about Mr. Lopez, wonderful individual and family. All right, having concluded board comments, I will open it up for public comment. Anybody who wishes to speak, please step up to the, to the podium and state your name and your address. Yes, sir?
From the Town Hall down to the bandstand here in the village, and it was very well-done, run by Tony and Robert Capatrick, and very pleased to see a hundred people or so show up. The main, the main thought was, why do we have assault rifles? As, as a couple of people have just mentioned, the tribute on Saturday for, for Robert Lopez was wonderful, so many people there, and wonderful, wonderful thoughts, wonderful words. When, when I had the, the good, good fortune to run past him, whatever, when I was jogging, he would always say, pick up the pace, and so I enjoyed him very much, as obviously a lot of people did. The Fourth of July is coming up on Monday, the fourth, and I'm pleased to say we're, we're getting back to our normal, we're going to have fireworks, which everyone has been asking for, clamoring for. The Journal is going to return, we're raising a lot of money with the Journal, there'll be a new feature, the Duck Derby. And one thing that I'd like to, you know, just village residents know about, our own Jeff Armitage is our grand marshal, and, and that's a nice tribute. One, one more thought on, on Cumberland, I did have, when I was mayor, I did have some renovations done there, but they were pretty chintzy about it. When they replaced the gas pumps, they were used gas pumps that they brought in, they changed the facade a little bit, I wanted them to re-surface the, the, the whole parking area, but they didn't do that. So because of what's been alluded to, we're not a big Cumberland, they don't spend a lot of money on us, but they did some renovations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? All right, seeing nobody else interested, I am going to make a motion to close the board, the village board's business meeting of June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Keep in mind, the microphones are still hot, and thank you, everybody, especially the folks that work for the village that came in tonight just to do the meeting for us, thank you.
I'm hungry.
Here we go again.